Now calling the meeting in Carver County, Governor of Commissioners, the order to rise in a moment of silence, prayer and pledge of believers. Loving Father, help us remember the birth of Jesus, that we may share in the song of the angels and the gladness of shepherds. Close the doors of hate and open the doors of love all over the world. Let kindness come with every gift and good desires with every greeting. Deliver us from evil by the blessings which Christ brings. May the Christmas morning make us happy to be thy children, with grateful thoughts and forgiving for Jesus' sake, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
These proceedings are being recorded for the sole purpose of preparing accurate written minutes. Recordings are overwritten following approval of the minutes, culminating in all unofficial records of these proceedings. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Savage?
Yes.
Yes, uh, other guests concerning county business, I'd like to introduce John McCardle, if you would, real quick, and if you want to come up front here. John, if you're for a present, uh, little presentation, as well as if you want to explain what the, uh, the event was and why we're getting the donations.
The Carver County Farm.
Yeah, sit down.
The Carver County Firemen's Association hosted, uh, a Keystone Firemanship Conference, October sixth and seventh. Uh, it was an inaugural event for us. It allowed us to showcase our training facility. Uh, at that time, we had, uh, people, uh, from, I guess it would be about fifteen instructors. There was five different programs that were going on simultaneously, and we had sixty people that signed up for it. Uh, this came from all across, uh, northeast Pennsylvania, as well as here in Carver County. And it was something that, uh, was put together with the way of, of being able to showcase what we can and can do with the, our facility. And I can tell you till this day, I'm still receiving compliments on the job that was done. Uh, it's only a testament to the help of the commissioners, uh, present and former, uh, in doing this. Uh, so we hope that, uh, this is going to lead into being able to do more at the facility. So at this time, I have two checks. One check is for one thousand dollars. And the second check is from Kevin Captrack, who was, uh, loved the job training, who coordinated the event. He gave a personal donation of a hundred dollars. So on behalf of, uh, the training committee, I'm presenting this to the county of Carver.
Thank you, John. And, uh, I think it's important to note that the instructors came from, uh, as far as Louisiana for this, uh, particular training program, uh, an instructor from PPNL who was retired now. He was one of the instructors and other out-of-state instructors as well. So it helped fill the, some of the local hotels as well, uh, and rooms in the area. So it did bring some other financial, uh, support in other areas, so.
And, and I think it's going to lead into, it was, we looked at it for the, the, uh, tourism, uh, weekends that we had here in October. So we're hoping that, uh, next year might be able to do it again.
And I'm sure you're going to find more training than you didn't think of, that's going to be added out there. It's like every day things change.
Well, and, and what helped, we had the elected officials, I know, uh, Commissioner Savage was there and participated in it. And, and a lot of, uh, elected officials that were there left with a different ask, a different idea of what goes on, uh, at fire scene. So, uh, I thank you, and we look forward to next year.
Yeah, thank you, John. And, uh, the, uh, program that, uh, we did in September for local elected officials, we had sixteen participants, including Chris. A lot of them had no clue what we really had there, or the training provided, uh, so we're already planning one, uh, uh, for May eleventh for elected officials that couldn't have made it this past time, so hopefully they will attend, find out what it's about. And as Chris can tell you, they got hands-on, they got the handle on hose line, flying ladder from down through the burn tower, et cetera. So we're, uh, watched police scenarios, actual shooter scenarios, work life EMS and education of, uh, victims from a shooting scene. So it was, uh, all out effort by fire, police and EMS to put this program on, and we're going to do it again in, in, uh, May. So we are getting some recognition. Other counties are coming to tour our facility, one coming from Pike, uh, Pike County and Spring. Montgomery County, I forget, it was yesterday or today, are touring the facility because they are going to put, uh, uh, on a, uh, an extension to their building, and they're working with Royal Construction, who is head of our construction manager for this project. But thank you, John, just recording the trainings out and all, uh, supported the, uh, cost at the training center. Thank you. Any questions? John, I know John has to leave to get back to work. Any questions, cause thanks? Okay, thank you, John. And John, by the way, is, uh, president of the County Fire Association, Fire Chief in Nestwood, and also the, uh, Fire Association, County Fire Association, so many meetings together, so.
Thank you, very good.
Hey, other guests concerning county business.
Commissioners, I just, uh, we, we came here, want to say very briefly, we see on your agenda under planning and development is, uh, the Carver County Open Space Advisory Board selection criteria. And we just wanted to take a minute to explain what that is. Um, Dan and I, I'm Dennis DeMarin, Dan Kunkel, we're two of five, uh, conservation advisors to the new open space advisory board. And we've been working diligently with that board that's been doing a great job in setting up the entire program from, from ground zero, setting up the application process, the manual. And we have a number of drafts that we're going to be sending the commissioners, but this selection criteria, what this is, this is the criteria that the board will use to evaluate applications that come in for funding land acquisition projects out of that million-dollar bond, uh, fund that, that the county has. And so this is a, a critical step. And it, it follows not only the spirit, but the letter of what the, a bond referendum that was put on the ballot. I guess, is it two Novembers ago now? Time flies. Uh, and so that, that's the purpose of this. And in the, uh, the top of, on, on our draft manual, it says, "The county strives to make sound financial investments, stretching its dollars by preserving the most acreage with the least amount of county funds and focusing on projects that provide the most benefit to its citizens." So that's the purpose of this criteria. And we'd like to thank you again for all your support for this whole program from day one. And, uh, we're working very hard on it with the board, and they are learning so much about conservation of lands. And, and they're developing this program, as Dennis said, from the ground up. Tonight at the meeting, we're going to be working on the draft manual that will be the guidelines for the entire program. After tonight's meeting, we would like to send you a copy of that draft. And it would be really nice if we could have an opportunity to sit down with the commissioners in a workshop session earlier, early in January, sometime early in the year, in the first half of January or whatever, so that we could get some input on some questions, on some things that you are going to have to decide about the program, so that we can go back at our January meeting and, and hopefully finish up the draft and send it in for your approval. And you've been getting all of the information and all of, and you've been making the approvals of all the various parts of this as we go along. And we appreciate your input and your, the changes that you've made to make it better, and, uh, so we'll continue that process.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Dennis, for all the time you put into this project. Uh, you probably full-time hours in attending meetings, morning, noon and night, and, uh, pushing this program and the importance of open space. So thank you for all the time and your commitment to the environment. Appreciate it. Are there any other, other guests concerning county business at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on.
Next item is the presentation to the fentanyl awareness campaign. Sarah Clark, owner of Kudu Creative.
Jamie, if you'd like to show this up here.
So, my name is Jamie Drake. I am the Director of Carbon Monroe Pike Juggernaut Alcohol Commission, the state authority that covers, um, all three counties of Carbon Monroe Pike. And, um, in conjunction with, uh, the nine commissioners across our three counties, we have worked diligently with Kudu over the last year to launch this campaign as part, um, of the Attorney General settlement dollars. Um, and with this campaign, it is our goal, um, that we are going to be able to raise awareness about the danger of fentanyl across our counties, um, from our stakeholders, to our community members, to our elected officials, all standing together in order, um, to spread that message that in our county, we're not going to stand for this, that we don't want that in our county. We, we want to stop fentanyl poisoning. Um, the overdoses that we're seeing currently all are involving fentanyl being placed in their illegal drugs like methamphetamine, cannabis, or pressed pills where it is being put into pills that people think they're buying one thing and there's fentanyl in it. It only takes grains of that substance in order for someone to die. So this is a crucial issue. This is what we're facing around the next part of the opioid epidemic that has been going on for years. And with that, we have ensued the help of Kudu Creative to really, um, help us, um, do this campaign. So, uh, how Sarah talked a little bit about the actual campaign. It is again a collaboration between us, the commissioners. We have, um, the criminal justice system is, is involved with us. Um, we have the District Attorney Mike Greek here supporting us. Um, any, any agency that we can get to partner with us on this, we're going to be doing messages that are going to be in schools, as well as when you go to your doctor's office. Um, it's not simply putting up billboards. It's everywhere that we can get this out in the community that people know the dangers, and also with that, how to get help.
Thank you, Jamie. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Sarah Clark. I'm the owner and creative strategist of Kudu Creative. We're located in Easton, Pennsylvania. Um, and thanks for having me. It's so awesome to see the train and all the Christmas in the village. I love it. Um, so thank you for having me here. Um, to reiterate what Jamie said, um, there's a huge problem, and it's the size of a few grains of sand. That's going to take more than just one county to eliminate so closely, um, locationally. So, uh, partnered in the fight against fentanyl, we have Carbon Monroe Pike and also their DAs. Um, so in Carbon Monroe and Pike County, fentanyl stops here. Together, we will create awareness, offer education about the dangers of fentanyl, as well as create resources with our, within our community. Um, uh, when we partner together, we win to stop the fentanyl crisis. Um, that means teenagers, parents, coaches, community members, we all have a role to play. So our major question is, how can we join the fight? So here is what we rolled out for messaging and brand recognition. This is the fight against Carbon County Fights Fentanyl. Fentanyl poisoning stops here is our tagline. This is not just, um, a soft, hey, we're going to make you aware of fentanyl poisoning. This is a very, very stand-up rally cry. We're going to stop this within our community. Um, we have a few things that I would like to show you in addition to what you're going to see in the community to share the education and spread the awareness. So if you'd like to. So how we structured the, the look and feel of the campaign is we have an overarching fight fentanyl. So that if we're, part of this, we're sharing resources, so posters, rat cards, these are going to go into schools, they're also going to go into hospitals. There's also more locations where we need to educate people. So together, we fight fentanyl. But individually, we created county logos, and this is specific for the ownership of each individual community. If it's specific to Carbon, if it's specific to Monroe, and it's specific to Pike, and we have those logos on the billboards within those communities, it's ownership, it's here, it's happening here. But as we talk about it with the tri-counties, we all fight fentanyl. The tagline, fentanyl poisoning stops here, again, a very strong stance. Part of the education is making people aware what fentanyl is and how strong it is. It's fifty to a hundred times more potent than heroin. And it's only that size is a deadly dose. That's all it takes. I think the visual and the graphic is very clear, very clean. You can see it going fifty-five miles an hour down the road, sometimes eighty. Um, but again, part, most of this is education, getting the awareness out there. We created a website called wefightfentanyl.org. Please visit. Um, and we also created social media. We're on Facebook, Instagram, and also YouTube. So we will also be spreading awareness and sending out our messages, um, via social media. Our website, if you want to click the link, is live, and so our landing page is wefightfentanyl.org. However, we do have, so upon landing, Carbon Monroe Pike County, fentanyl poisoning stops here. Join us in the fight of fentanyl is one of our messages. Parents, don't put off the talk. Fentanyl poisoning stops with you. The time is now to have a conversation with your kids about fentanyl. And we also have the younger demographic. We're all about phases. Uh, we all have phases. When we explore new things, explore the deadly truth about fentanyl. The fentanyl crisis stops here. So that's to start to get those messages out in little, um, digestible bits, right? And we're also talking to many community members, because this, like, once again, it's not one person's problem or one demographic's problem. It's a community problem, and we need to work together. So if you could scroll down, please. We have our socia's right there at the top. Um, each county has our own individual landing page. This way, we can share information that's specific to that county and not generalize. We also will put facts here that we get from, um, the government websites, um, about Pennsylvania in general. But we also find it really important to have county-specific facts.
And we will be working, Mike, as we were working with Sarah, on updates constantly of our schedules of everywhere we're out in the community during Narcan distributions, health fairs, any kind of activities to benefit communities, so that that calendar will be continually updated for people to go on and see what's happening, or how to access, um, risk reduction supplies if they need.
Yep, they'll be able to order, like you said, the DoTERRA, the dissolvable solution, the Narcan. And again, once it starts to warm up, we'll be doing a lot of community events too. So the calendar will be integral to having people know where and when we'll be around. And hopefully we'll distribute more life-saving, um, education and, um, methods. If you scroll down just a little. Again, I want to point out the partnership. I think what Carbon Monroe and Pike County is doing is something I haven't seen before. Usually it's individual counties tackling this. I think the impact is going to be three-folds what a single county would do. And that's really going to move the needle. I find that very important and valuable. Okay, can scroll down, please. Um, and then here we created, uh, an infographic video just, um, to share tidbits of information, um, visually and audibly. If you want to practice the video.
The amount of fentanyl seized last year alone to kill more than three hundred and sixty million people. A deadly dose is just two milligrams, about the size of a few grains of sand. Seven out of ten counterfeit pills are laced with it. It's no wonder more than one hundred and fifty people die each day from synthetic opioids like fentanyl. These are agonizing statistics. And in Carbon, Monroe and Pike Counties, fentanyl poisoning stops here.
So please look out for that on social media, and I encourage you to share, because a big piece of this is what the community does. We're here to share information, but the action of the community. So I have a few things of what we can do to join the fight. Uh, we can share awareness on your social media channels. Um, you can share the pages, you can even share the website, um, the posts. You can sign up for our latest newsletter. Each county has their own newsletter. Sign up. And then, like I said, we'll have places where you can order Narcan, so please visit the site, um, to order Narcan and other products that dissolve. Pharmaceuticals that may be expired and hanging out. And then also sharing resources for getting help. So, um, I believe that is the last slide. Do you want to check?
I want to thank you, um, but I just want to make a comment about this, that this is something, I mean, uh, I spoke about. probably 11, 12 years ago, our kids dying in our schools with other drugs. And I think this is a step above of what we did before we put curriculum in the schools. This is going to help the DAs and everything, you know, and even the Jamie with the drug abuse there. But when this started off, it wasn't something that I wanted to be nice about. I think we wanted to get informed out there that we're sick of this and that's what it is. But I just want to tell everybody in this room, I mean, we're going to give education. But if you look at this, like what this dosage is, this here ruins families. It destroys families. But I just want to get the point across, like the penny that's there. I have a penny here, what, what's on here? That will kill seven out of 10 people. There's 20 people in this room. There's 14 of yous that would go out in a bind bag and the other six, you might not be so lucky the next time. So that's the point that we want to get across. This is a bad thing and we got to stop it. And I want to thank them for like bringing this to our attention. And I think this is a step above that, that we're partnering with Carbon, our with Monroe and Pike that we are sharing. We're, we're taking our opiate money and making it two, three times the amount what we're getting in. And that's how we're going to fight this all together. And hopefully it'll ripple across the whole state of Pennsylvania that we can do this. But I said, I'm just tired of seeing families being destroyed. I mean, last night even on the report, there was a guy on there and people are complaining about, well, Narcan, well, if it's your son, you're going to give him Narcan. Somebody might complain about it, but we all have to get in this together. But like I said, remember, this will kill seven out of 10. And I said, 14 to 16 of you people in this room will be going out in a bind bag if that would happen.
Like the call. And Mike Drake, you have any comments this time?
I think that the program and its kickoff that we have is a great thing. Unfortunately for law enforcement, we're more reactive in the things we do. And once a crime has been committed, we utilize certain measures, whether it's incarceration or treatment courts, things to combat the problem, but not at the beginning level. And this is what's really needs to get out there for the awareness and it obviously will help law enforcement and it will help, you know, in, in any way that the epidemic that's going on. And it's only, you know, it's only been getting worse and worse each year, especially since I've taken office. I think it's a great job and you did an outstanding, outstanding work with this.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. And you're right about it's getting worse and worse. I believe last year it was four out of 10 pills. Then it was six out of 10 pills and now the latest is seven out of 10 pills. It keeps going up.
And, and it's like the thing about it, it's like, it's not just kids taking it. It's adults and even like seniors that can't afford their, their regular prescription. They're buying some of these off of the streets and it's killing people that are seniors, you know, and they don't realize it's in. And like I said, it's got to get out there and we just got to, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't, I always liked, they always said about the education part, but like even with Mike, there's going to be data that's going to be collected here. So maybe it'll help them that they see how much is in our area. And then maybe there's grants that we can get, you know, to have different things. And this here is going to be, to me, it's like, going to be like a spider web. Like you can branch out to anything here, what we want to do with this, you know, it'll have in there where you can go, where you can report this. You know, you know, where, where, where the education is going to be. And hopefully like it'll get out to the schools, like you said, and I think that's the one thing. In that video, I think we do have it, that it's going in the hospitals, right? So that, yeah.
Yeah, it's live right now.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, that's live with them right now. So.
So when you go to your doctor's appointment and you're sitting in the waiting room, you'll start to see these messages. They're going to be popping up at both St. Luke's providers and High Valley providers.
The cell phone charging stations are in the lobby. And there's a QR code on them. So you can scan them and visit the website immediately. So we'll collect people's email address there. We'll also collect people's email address at community outreach events. So if we have like a little health fair or something in the spring, we have a QR code, county-specific, people will scan and they'll sign up for the newsletters. And that's how we'll grow our numbers is through newsletter and email contacts.
Does news media have any questions at this time while they're here? Well, you guys did a great job. No questions. You're good? You're good?
Yep.
Okay.
Next, I listen to the report of executive sessions, hell. The Department reports budget transfer. Mr. Honor?
Yeah.
Mr. Luther Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Nelskine?
Yes.
There were no supplemental appropriations. Expenditures, approval of payroll check numbers, 75650 through 75665 and direct deposit check numbers, 6059901 through 6060344 for the payroll paid through the payroll fund checking account. For all county funds, only 670,843. This is the payroll dated December 13th, 2023. Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luther Savage?
Yes.
Yes.
Approval of check numbers, 240567 through 240697. For expenditures for the general fund carry account, only 1,551,678.94. Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luther Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Nelskine?
Yes.
The treasurer's report?
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luther Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Nelskine?
Yes.
The personnel report for county departments.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luther Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Nelskine?
Yes.
The acknowledgements for courts and row offices.
Motion acknowledged. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luther Savage?
Yes.
Yes.
Correspondence was received as listed profits will be made available to the press on the press. Children and youth, for approval on execution of fiscal year 2023, 2024, purchase of service agreements with Kids' Children's, Kids' Peace Children's Hospital of Snacksville and Kids' Peace National Centers Incorporated of Snacksville as per the attached rates.
Move to approve an execution. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luther Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Nelskine?
Yes.
The county engineer for approval, the reappointment of Carbon Engineering Incorporated of Somethill, Pennsylvania as county engineer and acceptance of the 2024 professional fee schedule, representing fees of $46 an hour to $189 per hour.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luther Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Nelskine?
Yes.
Planning and development, the Carbon County Open Space Advisory Board for approval. Carbon County Open Space Advisory Board selection criteria proposal.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luther Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Nelskine?
Yes.
CDVG completion extensions for approval on execution of project activity completion extension requests to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, requesting extensions of completion dates for CDVG projects. Mahoney Township and Westport Borough fiscal year 2019, contract number 73823 from April 30th, 2024 to September 30th, 2024.
Move to approve an execution. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luther Savage?
Yes.
Yes.
Another completion extension for approval and execution of project activity completion extension requests to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, requesting extension of completion dates. Lee Heitton Borough, Franklin Township, Mahoney Township, Jim Thorpe Borough, Lansford Borough fiscal year contract 2020, number 73823 from April 16th, 2024 to April 16th, 2025.
Move to approve an execution. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luther Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Nelskine?
Yes.
A FEMA hazard mitigation assistance grant program for ratification. Submission of grant application to FEMA for the FEMA hazard mitigation assistance unified grant program to only $45,000 to update the Carbon County mitigation update.
Move to write. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luther Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Nelskine?
Yes.
A DNA proposal for approval and execution, a letter of agreement, Wenzelowski Axelrod LLC of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, for financial consulting services for the year 2024 for a fee not to exceed $96,250. Hourly rate increased from $260 per hour to $275 per hour, with the maximum number of hours remaining at 350.
Move to approve an execution. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luther Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Nelskine?
Yes.
The listener's report?
Thank you. For Carbon Monroe Pike Drug and Alcohol, seeking a motion for approval and execution of an agreement with the Carbon Monroe Pike Drug and Alcohol Commission of Strasburg, Pennsylvania to provide 15 hours per week of treatment court coordinator services to the Carbon County Treatment Courts for the term commencing January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024 at a cost of $2,753.50 per month. The agreement will continue until terminated by either party upon 60 days written notice to the other party.
Move to approve an execution. Second. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
From Mock Junk Lake Park, seeking a motion for acceptance of a proposal received from Pamela Snare of Jim Thorpe, Pennsylvania for the lease of the Beach Food and Refreshment Concession located at Mock Junk Lake Park for the term January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024, with automatic renewal options for two successive terms with a final termination date of December 31st, 2026 in the amount of $4,200 per year for a total of $12,600.
Motion second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luther Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Nelskine?
Yes.
And lastly, seeking a motion to adopt resolution 45 of 2023 for ratification of the resolution honoring Michael Saffrancio for his unyielding dedication to the citizens of Jim Thorpe and the great impact he has had and continues to have on Jim Thorpe and the surrounding areas.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luther Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Nelskine?
Yes.
No further.
Any further business? Hearing that commissioners reports, Mr. Honor?
Yes, a couple of things I want to point out today that the 911 fee bill did pass and it was only because with an increase of a $2.95, not what we had hoped for, but it was because of all the people making contacts and state senators in particular on the importance of the fee bills and the cost to the counties. It was news media publishing the concerns of the emergency responders, Northeast Pennsylvania Alliance sending letters. And it was a tremendous effort by everyone across the state to stress to our senators how important this is to counties. We were unsuccessful in getting what we asked for. And unfortunately, this is going to be sunsetting again in the near future. They, they're exactly, this is going to go till February 1st of 2026. So they are having another study done. They just did one in '22. And now they have to do a report by the end of the year. They're supposed to submit a report on how the efficiencies of communication centers. They're talking about combining the 988 program into the communication center, which I have a real problem with because our dispatchers are not human service people. It has to be, you know, how are we going to handle that? I'm not saying it's impossible, but I think we're going to then have to have dedicated people to route those calls to the proper authorities. How that'll be handled, I don't know. They're also talking about combining the state police dispatching into the comm centers instead of having their own private dispatcher. So they're looking at any ways they can save money. But it's going to be a long time until something does occur. It's going to happen overnight. But they have to realize as well that the funds that we're asking for would also help to pay for those things. And without the funds, are they going to fund it? There's a lot of issues going on. It's going to be another hard fight for the next year and a half, two years to continue to increase the funds. In the meantime, we're not going to see any cost of living increases, which we requested and it's going to remain the same. So longer it goes on, further behind we're going to get. The other thing I want to mention real quick is we did take a tour of the tent city last week on the 12th. Ellie, Bob, Chris and I went down there and took a walk around, talked to a few of the people. Probably only about seven or eight people there at the time we were there, but more like 20, 25 tents, I would say, or different sites with people that did not all in one cluster are spread out pretty good. Obviously, one of the persons was on something, where he was acting in that. Not an easy place to get to by vehicle because of the water, especially now you will not get to it because of the high water in the Lee Heitton River. But we then met with Heffley's Office, Carbon Monroe Pike, MHDs, the Carbon Monroe Pike Drug and Alcohol and some other people on trying to find places for these people. A lot of the problems are not only drugs, mental health issues. You just can't go in there and evict them. It becomes a liability. I know there's a municipality being sued over that by the ACLU, I guess. And you have to store their belongings as, which a lot of us, to us, is not worth anything, but to them, it's their belongings, their property. So it's a very difficult situation to resolve and we're looking to start gathering new email addresses, et cetera, and revitalize the homeless task force that we had, hasn't met since 2019. Unfortunately, our leadership there that has moved on to bigger and better things. And we're gathering the, updating the names and participants for that program. And hopefully maybe sometime in January, we'll have our first homeless task force meeting. Continuing problem. We will continue to work on it to get, see what we can do to clean it up. Because some of the pictures I have taken, it is really a mess down there. You know, a lot of litter, a lot of garbage, vacuum sweepers. The microwaves, they have no electricity. So I don't know where all this joke comes from. So we've got a major issue and it's not just Carbon County, not just Jim Thorpe, at least one in Comerden yet, and other places that we're aware of. So we're working on that and it's a nationwide problem. And I fear it's only going to get worse with the cost of living, rentals and food costs that continue to rise and make it impossible for a young family or single people to afford. That's all I have then. Meeting adjourned before you're going to retirement board. Any questions, Amy?
I was going to say, I want to stay for the retirement portion.
That's what I don't say too. I think it'll be a short one today. So. At this time, I'll call the monthly meeting of the retirement board to order. And for the last time, for, I'll turn it over to our controller, Mark Zverchek for his last retirement board meeting before our newly, newly elected Kayla Hermans sitting in the background will take over. So pay attention, Kayla. Okay, Mark?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, we'll start with the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting held November 16th, 2023. Mr. Zelenka?
Yes.
Mr. Sverchak, I will abstain since I was absent. Mr. Arner? Mr. Luca Savage?
Yes.
And Mr. Nelskine?
Yes.
Are there any guests concerning retirement board business? Next will be the report of executive sessions. They weren't any held. Next is to ratify the warrant for checks number 41003 to 41005 and the direct deposit 7024429 to 7024846 for the month of November.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Zelenka?
Yes.
Mr. Sverchak, yes. Mr.? Mr. Sverchak, yes, Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Noxton?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh next will be the uh retirement activity report for the month of November, we had. Free retirement refunds and one of our retirees passed, Mr. George Repinick. He served twenty-four years as court reporter. I always like to express the condolences on behalf of the retirement board to the Repinick family. We had for the month of November, uh monthly benefits of four hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents. Refunds of ten thousand five oh eight twenty-six. For total monthly disbursement of four ninety-five, eight ninety-six, nineteen. That will leave a portfolio value as of eleven thirty twenty-three of eighty-four million, two thirty-one, four thirty-two, thirty-one. I always like to provide the board and the public with the most recent results as of Friday, December fifteenth, last Friday. Eighty-six million, three oh three, four forty-two, so you have a nice bump up there about two and a half percent. And just so the public and the media. That's following this, I think when I took over about four years ago, the fund was up by eighty million dollars. And it may not seem like a big return at eighty-six, but uh we do pay out on average about five hundred thousand a month, so that is. Approximately six million a year times four years is uh twenty-four million dollars payout over four years, so it's still. A a nice uh return if the fund is yielding. Okay, any questions on that? Alright, then the next two motions are done annually in the month of December. To set the interest rate on the members' account for two thousand twenty-four. And I would make the motion to set it at five and a half percent, which is where it is now.
I'll go ahead and make that motion. Discussion, I think, Mark, we should emphasize that is the highest amount that we can authorize, correct?
Uh that's my understanding, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. But I think also with the current market rate environment, I think is reasonable because certainly bond returns are over five percent now, right, so it's reasonable. Thank you, uh Mr. Zelenka?
Yes.
Mr. Sverchak, yes, Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas Savage?
Yes.
And Mr. Noxton?
Yes.
Thank you. The second motion would be to reimburse the twenty-twenty-three retirement administration expenses to the general fund. And uh the actual number is typically not known until. In the first quarter of the following year, but we have to do the motion at this time of year. Uh last year it was about uh two hundred fifty thousand dollars and we think it's going to be close to that again this year.
Move to approve, I'll second.
Uh Mr. Zelenka?
Yes.
This Mr. Sverchak, yes, Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas Savage?
Yes.
And Mr. Noxton?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh I did not receive any correspondence. Listeners report?
No report.
Investment managers report, uh we did not receive any for this month. I believe Mrs. Wilson will be back in the month of February then to review the year and fourth quarter of twenty-three. Any new business for the board? Any old business? Any further bonus?
New business, just like tonight. Mark Sverchak, Christian Decevich for their past three years on the retirement board and. Takes a full fire up, the five people on the retirement board to uh things, keep things moving and. Uh over twenty-four years I've been here, uh we. Retirement board has always worked together in the best interest of the county and we have always. Totally, almost all, very, every time, I think, uh uh together. One way to the other, which is rare because they're just a lot.
Yes.
But uh, you know, but this is one of the things that we. Totally agree on and do the best we can to ensure that our uh employees and the retirees are properly funded. And or uh do what we can to try to keep the annual uh. Contribution down, which is what it's gonna be, one point six this coming year, I think, somewhere around there, yeah, five million and a half.
Right.
I have a few comments if I may, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. I just want to say it was an honor, a privilege and a pleasure to serve as retirement board secretary these last four years and as controller. And I wanted to assure the public, of course, the media, the retirees and the employees, that the pension fund is well-funded. And in very good shape and uh doing well, and I wanted to thank my fellow board members here. For their diligence in serving as fiduciaries in the overall management of the fund. And just a quick summary of some of the things we did accomplish over the last four years, I thought it was good. For the public to be aware of that, even though all of us, of course, are aware of it. We did adopt the OCIO management uh scenario, which is outsourced chief investment officer. Which basically gives our uh consultant market associates. The ability, the discretionary authority to act on our behalf. Uh rather than waiting month to month for us to act as a board, which really helps in some of the market volatility that would that every fund experiences over any given time. So that is certainly done well. Let's see here, we we always will uh adopt the. Um oh, we also adopted the revised actuarial tables, which is was another big thing because of the uh increased longevity of. Uh not just our retirees, but citizens as general, and a lot of the things the retirement board did does have. A cost associated with it, but because this is a really a long-term commitment on behalf of the county, it's really important to. Review and consider and really approve those things as 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 we can and as we can afford. Uh the other thing we always will, in my four years, the county always agreed to fund. The actuarial determined contribution on an annual basis recommended from our actuary corn fairy to continue to make sure that. Fund is well-funded, we've been doing that. And we did grant one call in the four years, so that's something as well for our retirees. Uh uh county our size and a fund our size, it would be nice to do it every year, but it's just really impossible. Based on the financial uh commitment to the fund. And again, we stayed fully funded, we're at a high, one of the highest levels of being a fully funded, which is a testament to what. The board has done over the past four years and I thank everyone. I wish Commissioner Lucas Savage well in his future endeavors. And certainly welcome Controller-elect Kayla Herman and Commissioner-elect Mike Sefranco as they join the board next month. That's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Further business? Comments? Meeting adjourned.
Let's talk about, I guess, you guys, the open space criteria, uh when you guys pass up, what kind of, what is that and what did you kind of do with it?
It's really what the open space advisory board is gonna use it for. To provide recommendations ultimately to the board of commissioners.
And what what is this criteria that you put on specifically, I guess?
Well, I think we 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 would go ahead and defer to uh 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 our representatives, right, our subject matter experts, right? We can email a copy uh for the media also, you know, so you guys have all these. Yeah, basically, there's three criteria, so. A- as I, as I stated, we're looking for the highest conservation value land. And so, once we have an application process, in fact. We want to uh talk to the commissioners about having a uh. A public meeting with municipalities and land trusts and nonprofits and explaining the the program and how it works. But we we break it out into features of primary importance. Again, back to the bond referendum and the the spirit and the intent of trying to preserve uh quality lands for. In in our, in our program, it's water farms and land. So we're talking about water quality, we're talking about pu- putting conservation easements on working farms. And we're talking about acquiring. Highest quality forest land for for water filtration and all that for wildlife. So there's just a cri- criteria of highest importance, secondary importance. And uh parcels under consideration as to ownership, it's it's a very detailed uh type process. Uh but it's important to have this.
So this is a necessary step of making this kind of advisory board?
Yes, yes, this is really the the scorecard that they're going to use when applications come in. To dig deep and evaluate those applications and then ultimately make recommendation to the commissioners. Of whether to fund that project or not.
Oh, I need it, thank you. That's all I had, thank you.
Amy, anything?
I guess, just um under the course fund is the email from Aggie. What does this mean for that grant?
Well, I actually have been talking to planning, that money's more than likely is going to need to be. Uh returned to basically DCED, which will eventually uh go back to the federal government if not using that's major. I I think though, uh it is disappointing that the leadership of, you know, peaceful nights ultimately determined that. The grants legal requirements, and then there were some unknown tax, potential tax liabilities that they were unsure. That kind of has led them to this uh decision. You always bear in mind with with the grant money that we've received, there's certain requirements such as prevailing wage. That makes projects much more expensive than maybe would be acceptable at other times and stuff like that. And again, the tax liability is another issue uh that they were concerned with.
They make it so hard and great, sometimes it's just not worth the effort. To apply for and go in with the RAPPE grant, we get said and done and. All the extras you have to do and the time and commitment, it's for a quarter million dollars and I'm waiting to see what the final number. Is going to be and we're finally getting, submitting our final reports for that for payment. And uh we've been going back and forth for years and sometimes the effort is just not worth and it's a shame that we have to send it back, it's just. Very difficult sometimes to spend money because of restrictions and I will note that there is finally some push. To increase the amount of uh. The twenty-five thousand dollar. Limit that you can uh, under twenty-five thousand, you don't have to go for a prevailing wage. There is finally a push to increase that, however, with both project. Even if they double or triple, it will not mean any of a lot to us, uh because it's. Uh I don't know when they instituted it, when it first came out or when, it but that's been the limit, anything over twenty-five thousand. You know, you have to pay prevailing wage and that really knocks off uh or a lot of the local tradespeople. And doing projects here because of the aggravation of all the paperwork and that was one of the biggest things we had in uh. Uh the RAPPE grant from the payrolls, it were off by pennies on a two and a half million dollar access project. To get to the, to build the upright buildings. And it was back and forth and it was very, very aggravating, not only to the county. But to our engineers as well as the uh contractors. That spent a great deal of time reconciling, it was a penny. And in one case, they had to write a check for less than a dollar, I think it was, because they didn't pay the the person to write them out of money. It's really ridiculous.
Amy, I would add on that, yep, so the state may give us some. May give us an opportunity, but when it's federal money, we still have to operate under federal rules, so state funding. You know, it might help us, but again, if it's federal money, we still have to adhere, this is a specific one, if I recall correctly. That required regardless of the amount spent, had to go at prevailing wage, you know, so difficult.
And I know the big push there was the homeless shelter for women, so that leaves Carvey County that gap again. Um so what do you guys feel on that?
Disappointing that we started, what, twenty nineteen, this process has started and we're back to where we were. Now, the fact is, Aggie is going to continue with that, but again, she's gonna have to go out and continue to raise money. Uh to make this happen, you know?
It's frustrating, frustrating, after all the time we've been, we went out of our way and bidding, worked with contractors to get the price down and everything else. And here we sit, got nowhere.
Is it the project that you kept having to delay, like?
Yeah, we have, we asked for extensions. Yeah, absolutely, yeah, we put it on three times. Oh, we did, it was like five. The lady used to keep count, I know, of the number of times we put up her. Yeah, it was. It was.
Thank you, Merry Christmas, Senator.